That's what we're gonna, if you could just highlight those.
Okay.
And then any changes to the organizational structure.
Okay.
And then, uh, what you want to talk about.
Okay.
And we're gonna go over the general... How many organizations do you have? You got like 600 sheets here for...
I didn't do that, so I don't know.
Start.
What?
I had written on one of my post-it notes.
Jesus. I didn't do it!
And then we're gonna go over the, just the summary of budget detail.
Okay.
All right?
I should've printed that out.
We're good. We're good to go.
I don't have a copy of it, so I should've done it. Should've went online and printed it. Usually you're using a MUNIS report, that's what I'm usually using.
All right. Good afternoon, chiefs.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for entertaining us this morning. It'll be very brief. First of all, we're very grateful for the, for the opportunity to be before council this morning and, or actually this afternoon now, and, and talk about these great important things. We, uh, the, the mayor allowed the department heads and many others to participate in the budget planning process and, and so I'm very familiar with, with what the mayor's proposed budget is and in full support of his budget. We have a, a couple of things that we'd like to brief council on and maybe ask for council consideration on, um, at following what the mayor has proposed, but at council's direction, I'd like to, uh, give a brief overview of our, uh, department priorities, goals and objectives. The, the, a long story short would be that our department priorities, goals and objectives have not changed since last year. We have maintained those measurements and are continuing to track our performance based on these, uh, these very comprehensive and industry standards for performance. Questions about our department priorities, I'd be happy to entertain those. As it relates to the org charts, I have in front of me the org charts that we submitted. I understand that they're quite a bit different than, in for, in format anyway, than what council has before them, um, but our, our organization increased, um, mid-budget year by a total number of four firefighter EMTs and, and as a part of the FY '18 budget, budget request, there are several organizational and operational changes made with reallocating, or not reallocating, but, um, with, with several promotions and redistribution of resources to stations one and through stations one and 16, based on the increased staffing that we have, and, and council has that before them as well. Questions about our staffing, I'd be happy to entertain that at this time.
We are now at four-man truck.
We are, we are a three-person truck and engine, 24/7/365. Four is our optimum, but we're, we're working on that. And the reason why I say that, Mr. Council President, is because we're also trying to staff station two as well. And if we staff, if no one is off of, if no one is off, taken off where they're sick or holiday or whatever, we can have all three staff pieces with three people minimum. If we have one person off, then we have to, you know, maneuver those people around as best we can.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm incorrect, but when we put in the four additional positions...
Correct.
My understanding was that they were gonna bring full staffing to, to one of the engines. Is that true?
Yes. And, and that was incre, that allowed us to open station one, staff 24/365. 24 hours a day, 365. We weren't able to do that, because prior to that, if you'll recall...
So we're still riding three?
We, yes. But we are, but we're, but what we have done is it relates to assemblage of effective firefighting forces, we've doubled that assemblage.
Because your, when your automatic response would be two houses.
It'd be three.
Three houses.
Be three, but we have two staffed, 24, minimum, 24/7. So instead of bringing four to the party, we're bringing six.
So effectively, okay. But you still have the four more men?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and we try to maximize that return as best we can. That's why we're able to, when no one is off, able to staff all three units, thus making our effective staffing, nine total people responding with, with three pieces.
Gotcha.
Other questions about staff?
Sort of.
Okay.
Based on some of the changes that have occurred, including the fire service agreement. Territory. Is there any readjustments to territory that will assist us in serving citizens better?
Absolutely. The, the, as, as it stands right now, based on the currently approved and ratified fire service agreement, there's no change in our fire service district. We believe that there's a proposal that will be placed before the mayor and the county executive to change that slightly, but at this point, our fire service district has, has been outlined in the current fire service agreement that's ratified and it has not changed. And our ability to staff station one 24/7/365 has increased our performance metrics to help us serve it better. And, and the month of March was our first month of seeing that staffing increase and our metrics significantly improved. And we think that that's, that's through April and June, when we evaluate the second, the second, um, the second quarter of this year, calendar year, we, we expect to see those numbers drastically improved.
Good.
Or dramatically improved would be the right way.
Okay.
Other questions?
Any other questions?
Keith, in your, on the goals section, and I'm not sure if you have this, I don't know if you wrote these, I don't, I don't really know.
Yeah.
Um, it says turnout, well, calls within 90 seconds of the dispatch, within four minutes for volunteers 90% of the time.
Yes.
One of the problems at station number one is that they weren't getting out of the firehouse about 50% of the time underneath that. I'm gonna piggyback on Mr. Council President, Keith's questions about the fire service agreement. It looks to me as if that $914,000 went right to the general fund. Doesn't look like it's put into the fire department budget. So I was, I was wondering as, what are the, what is the, the turnout dispatch minutes for the other two stations? Are, are they meeting their turnout times? And in my opinion, and I think that's pretty clear and it has always been, I believe, at some point over the next 10 or 15 years, we're going to meet an all volunteer, I mean, an all, all career, and I wanted to have that discussion about that money coming back from the fire service agreement and whether or not we should be allocating some of that money to the fire department headed in that direction. The rest of this budget for us, looking from 50,000 feet up, is a lot of tax breaks, it's a lot of fee increases, it's, it, the mayor, we just told him just a little while ago when he was sitting here, this, this is really a whole lot of stuff and a whole lot of moving parts, but I wanted to specifically get down to volunteers, career people in the other two fire stations and the $941,000 that we expect from the county.
Okay. I'll try to wrap that up as simply as possible. If, if I was gonna speak for my comrade in arms, the finance director, and from, from an accounting perspective, and he's gonna correct me when, when I'm wrong, because I know, I know he will, from a, from an accounting perspective, he's going to say, and I think rightly so, that the $900,000 that you referenced is already coming to the fire department, even if it goes into general fund, because we have a $7 million operating budget and there's, and we don't have $7 million worth of revenue, so he's going to automatically tell you that, that $900,000 is, is being accounted for in the fire services budget. Keith, did I make, did I miss that there?
Well, I don't know, because the fire budget was adjusted by $941,000 in here. If I read it correctly, and that could not be, that might not be case, I'm not gonna lie.
And that may be a, a question that Keith may need to answer for us.
That's that, right in the top right across the table.
There's a bus coming and Keith standing in front of it.
Yeah. Can you, and it was late last night, Keith, and I'm, I, I'm really used, I can't, I know this is gonna sound very odd, but I'm really used to the old way of doing it where there were those long sheets that went across like this, and, you know, takes you 25 years, you know exactly where you're doing it, and then they go.
There's the sheet right there.
While, while Keith is trying to answer that, I'll try to move on to part two of your question.
Okay.
Councilman, councilman, we are, we will continually monitor our performance metrics. What I can tell you is that the other two stations, from a volunteer perspective, are, we have, we're seeing a slight uptick or improvement in their performance.
Okay.
And what we are seeing is a significant improvement in our performance because of the ability to have staffed stations. And, and going to your comment about career...
And that's where they're sleeping at.
Correct.
Uh-huh.
Correct. That will, that will dramatically improve all of our performance metrics, including the most important one is assembler's time of effective firefighting force. So we're gonna continue to monitor that, but what we can tell you is in the first month of our new, new staffing that we, that council graciously gave us, we've seen an improvement in, in all of those categories. So we'll continue to monitor that. And, and if council would like, I'd be happy to come back at the end of the second quarter with a full quarters' worth of statistics.
That would be good, too.
Yeah. That would be good.
I guess maybe, uh, do you have any current open positions?
Yeah, we have, help me, Chief Toll, is it two?
Well, we have one who left our organization, and then we have one who's out on extended period on FMLA for medical reasons.
Are there any currently in training? Are there any pending retirements or anybody going in the drop?
All right, so let's, let's answer those one at a time. Currently in training, can you give us a little more?
New hires. So we, we, four positions, do we immediately fill them with qualified firefighters?
Those are filled.
Okay.
And then we have, we have started a, um...
Hiring process.
Hiring process that I'll let Chief Toll speak to, to prepare for a hiring list...
Okay.
For future hires.
Did we resolve the issue with the gentleman who was a volunteer and chose to stay with us and has been on line for a paid position for a while? Remember the, no, you don't remember?
I don't, I don't. We'd have to speak very specifically, so I don't, I don't have a...
Okay, I can, I can talk later.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, it was something that came up and, when the guys, when we're having all this hull of blue.
Yeah. Okay. Well, yeah, I don't recall at this point.
Okay.
So we have a hiring process that we'll, we'll test in the middle of May.
Yes, May 13th.
May 13th.
Yeah.
And then that'll give us a list. As council has been briefed already, we've applied for the federal SAFER grant...
Okay.
Which would add additional firefighters in a contract-style position, which we've done before. So we're making preparations for all of that.
And one last question. What are we, as far as approaching kids who are in junior high, high school about being cadets and, you know, getting interest of, of those at that age in service, either in volunteer or career?
Could you speak?
Is that something a part of our, of what we're looking at as well?
Well, they, we have a recruitment and retention campaign that goes out to the schools. Every year before the school season starts, they go out and try to solicit kids in school to join the cadet program and then go through the VOTEC program and get their Fire One training, EMT training. So that's actively ongoing.
Okay.
We've had several that have went through that program and ultimately received a full-time job with the department after they complete the training and get out of school. So we've been fortunate with that.
Yeah.
So that is ongoing. And to talk about the four positions that we just hired, one of the benefits that we have is we hire part-time employees. So they come into our organization as part-time employees, they work part-time hours, and then when job openings become available, we offer those positions to them, and then they transfer right from a part-time to full-time employment. So there's no additional training we have to do for them, they're already members, so it's a very easy transition to...
Were we able to fill those part-time positions as well?
That's what this hiring process. We've exhausted the list.
Okay.
So on May, we have a application being accepted now. May 13th will test, and from that list, we will hire the one that we have vacant right now, and then we will create additional part-time people to then, as future openings become available, it's an easy transition.
Yeah, the benefit of the part-time list is obviously that as they, as they come to work, they audition for us.
Yeah.
Right? So it's a known, it's a known that when you hire somebody, you're getting that really good employee, so. You, you asked an additional question about the drop and about retiring.
Correct.
Just, here's what I know. I know that there are two employees currently in the drop, and I have, I think I have one that's eligible. And I also have another officer that his past is eligibility for drop, but can retire at any time. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
I found my page, Mr. Keith.
Go for it.
Page 20. If you go, I'm, you all know PAPAS, this is silly.
Page 20?
Go ahead, I'll follow.
Go ahead.
Just, if you go down, community promotions is, nothing is funded, so it's a negative 236. So that's not, that's $236,000 we didn't have to put in there. If you go down...
You're in the revenue side.
I'm in, yeah. And then here, it takes $942,000 out of your revenue, because your budget was 8.8, approved for 17, it ended up being 8.9, and now it's 7.9.
Now, that number has a lot to do with the, that last year's number included probably 1.4 million in ladder trucks, so we don't have that this year. So last year had a big capital asset, this year doesn't. That's why that saves us.
So this 942 has nothing to do with the 942...
Really? Then you'd say there's a 430,000 increase.
I should be playing the numbers, is what you're telling me?
It's more like a $430,000 increase as opposed to a decrease in, in other expenses.
So, but let me ask this, is this 9.79, does that include the $941,000 from the county for the fire service agreement?
Well, let's, let's put some...
I love you, Keith, because you can either take it or you can get it to me, so now we're gonna find out what happens here.
Yeah. This is, this is just some clarity on, I have on the fire service, what came in and what, what got deleted. So I have a number of a million and 60, that's the last number I got. That's a, that's the number we're, it's in the budget.
It's close, because when you add the two together, it's, that's a close number.
Okay. And then subtracted from that is what we used to get that flowed through our budget was $590,000. So in this budget, that represented a difference of revenue of $470,000, that's an increase. But we're flowing to the volunteers, we have $250,000 stipends. So that, and that's at 370, as far as new money to the city.
New money.
And you could, but you could say, we have two volunteers that used to get $250,000, now they got $100,000, so there's 150 less going to the volunteers, so the net for the city is $200,000.
Well, I have 10 more questions.
But to the budget, it's like 370.
Okay. So in all actuality, and, and this is what I want to be clear, and I won't say it again, even if nobody hears it or nobody writes about it, what was said was coming to us in the paper isn't anywhere near the amount of money that's coming to us in the paper.
Exactly.
Exactly. Thank you. I'm done with my questions for the fire department.
Could I ask you to, let's take a short break so that I can deal with...
It's a perfect time to take a break.
Great.
But don't leave.
From the Maryland Food Bank, and they requested 10 to 15 minutes...
How are you?
...of our time during the budget process, and I granted that.
Just dealing with GOFFA all day, that's all I'm doing.
Thank you.
Actually, I know what these things cost, so you can, I have mine still at home, so yes.
Jack, you're all right. I tell you.
I say, I used to work for a nonprofit, so I know when...
I know you did.
I know what everything's worth.
You need to go back in the vaults.
Huh?
You gonna open those cookies or what?
You don't already open them.
Yes, would you like a cookie or a cookie or something?
No, no, we're good.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm just not eating them.
Okay.
Well, you have more restraint than I, than I do.
That's why we put them by April.
Thank you again, Jack. Thank you for having us come today. Actually, this, we had an appointment with the mayor and, and also with the council president to discuss about the Maryland Food Bank, what we've, what we've seen in Salisbury, what we do in Wacomico County, what we do in our state. Each of you have a pamphlet inside of your brochure, I'm sorry, your...
Folder.
Folder. And it shows a kind of a, what I like to do is show a five-year trend, what we've seen as far as a five-year trend in Salisbury. And as you can see, um, from FY 12, this is pounds, number of pounds going into Salisbury alone, that are distributed from our Owings Branch warehouse down the street. We've been serving Salisbury for 33 years. We initiated, I think if we were to hang our hats on something, we initiated the school pantry. It's a makeshift pantry into schools with free, that have a high free and reduced meal. That has been a successful, a huge success. We've also, I think one of our claim to fame is our pantry on the go. It is a, it is a distribution into the community. We have 37 of them a month, totals of about 200,000 pounds going in, directly into the community for families. So we had a conversation with Mayor Day and, as I said, with the county president, and he was kind enough to give us a few moments. We are asking the city for $10,000. Part of that will go towards our school pantry to help fund that. The other part will help support our pantry on the go, our mobile pantry, and this directly, this food goes directly to, to families who are food insecure. 38% of the people that we serve do not receive government help whatsoever, and they just need a lift. They just need a lift. City of Salisbury supported our efforts in 2009 for a total of $5,000. We are asking the city to sit around the table with us and support our mission, help us to, to support the community with our mission. Plain and simple. It has been, since the recession, it has been a real fight. Our operation in Salisbury alone is a million-dollar budget. The funding that we get on the shore is 20%. All the money that we raise on the shore stays on the shore, but it is subsidized 80% from the Baltimore County, our main central warehouse. So again, we are requesting that the, the city sit at the table with us, help us. We, like I said, we have served the city of Salisbury and on the eastern shore for 33 years, and I think we've done an excellent job. Our admin costs are still 93%, seven, seven cents out of every dollar goes toward our administration, unheard of in the modern nonprofit day, as you can attest to that, Jim. And, um, so we wanted to make this plea. I know you're doing your budget, and I want to thank you for your time.
Steve?
I was, I was looking at the two charts, just if I could ask a quick question.
Sure.
The, the county numbers.
Right.
And, and so this is city separate from the county numbers.
That is correct.
Okay.
It is. It's broken out. The city is broken out, but in that county number would have included the city number.
But that's just gleaning data out of, that's Salisbury alone and Salisbury.
This is the total for Wacomico.
Right, and, but the...
But we're included in Wacomico.
That is correct.
You are included in Wacomico. So you can see Salisbury has more...
Is it a day giver?
Is the vast majority of the user for Wacomico County.
The number of FY 14 for Salisbury is larger than the county number.
Well, that, that may only have been because of a certain program, it may have been a T-Fat program that we had, which is a, a distribution of government food that would cause that to be higher.
Okay.
But that would be the only reason, and it really probably should have been picked up here in that.
Got you.
Because it would have counted for Wacomico as well.
Jack, where is, where is, can, where does this go if community promotions has zero in the margin?
Well, we're going, we'd have to add it.
We'd have to add it.
That's one of those things that we go, remember, we made the list of...
Right.
That's one of them.
That's one. Could go back.
Yeah.
And just as a point, did all the community promotions get zero?
Based on the budget, yeah.
SNHS, all those that roll in that list?
Yes. Habitat. But those are questions...
We live in an interesting time here, let me just tell you.
Yes.
I can't imagine trying to do that.
Well, that's...
I think some of the, I think just to hitchhike on what Nancy said, you know, we're, we're a very efficient, effective organization. We're committing some money, you'll see, there's a sheet that Nancy has included in there. We have raised a million and a half bucks, raised privately to make the, the Salisbury distribution, our warehouse on the eastern shore, more efficient, more effective, able for us to handle more of the produce that we grow and distribute here on the shore. We, we have a huge font, the Food Bank program, it's in your packet there as well. And so I think the, the point is that we're a good use of the city's dollars. We've been here for 33 years. We have a responsibility for all eight counties on the eastern shore, but if you look at the need and our distribution, Wacomico County is far and away the highest, and Salisbury is the vast majority of what we distribute in Wacomico County. So it is a local service for our local, the local need, and again, I think we do a marvelous job at doing it. We, we are committed to staying in Wacomico County. You know, we had looked a while back about trying to get another building, we just decided that was not great use of our, of the funding that we get, so we're gonna add some into what we have right now and all working with the county as a matter of fact to help make that happen for us.
Well, some of the businesses in town certainly have been great supporters of the Food Bank.
They have.
Huge, Jimmy.
The freezer over there.
Purdue.
Thanks God to Jimmy and, you know.
They have.
And we get a truckload of chicken every other week from Purdue, and huge amount of volunteers come from Purdue.
And the eastern shore means a lot to us for the mere fact that we are investing $1.5 million of our own, our own money to, to make, so we can do 25% more increase in the distribution.
In that same square footage.
Mm-hmm. In the same square footage. So it, it's, and it's gonna be nice, and you all will get an invite when we have our ribbon-cutting ceremony, and you'll see what I'm talking about.
The church is one of the churches who distributes the Hunger Action Program, Wesley Temple.
Yeah.
Wesley Temple.
Wesley Temple.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we had that, we had a pack to give back, I mean, we had the, yeah, the pack to give back event for the holiday meals in Wesley.
Yep.
Yeah.
It was great. So, you know, we're the safety net underneath the safety nets. If you were to take us out of the equation, social services could not provide. They are like stretched like a rubber band, we all know that. And so, you know, the 38% of the people that really don't get help from the government, you know, if they need a lift, and the seniors, let's not forget the seniors, you know, that need maybe a lift, because let's say their prescription costs, that prescription cost that they had to have was outrageous, which is true. To lift them up, just, we have to be there for them, because they have nowhere else to go to. We are the nucleus of food insecurity.
Yes, you are.
So, thank you, I appreciate that.
We will, we will take a serious look at this when we get down. It goes on a list, we have a list of things that...
Great.
We have the ability to add to the budget, and this obviously is a very worthy cause, so we will do our best to accommodate.
Appreciate it. If you have any questions, our cards are inside the packet, feel, you know, feel free to give us a call, and I want to again, thank you very much for your time, I do appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Good seniors, safe travels, please.
Thank you.
I know you came across the bridge.
She did.
I helped you.
And I'm going to, I'm going to Seattle.
She has to go back. I have the good fortune of being able to stay.
That's true.
Yeah, he said, "I'm going to Seattle." But I, I hope your cruise was sunny and bright and fun. I know. And me.
It does look pretty relaxed.
Well, you look relaxed, you kinda, yeah.
Well, that's because I'm exhausted.[1662.04]
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, yes. Appreciate it. Uh-huh, thanks for coming.
I mean, that's why you have to assume based on looking at it. We haven't gotten to that point, but we...
I'm just, I've, I've...
I noticed, I noticed it too.
I can't imagine, and I say this with all due respect, all the people involved were during my time, six years as mayor, putting forth a budget that does not have any community promotions and not a single solitary...
Is that a misprint, Keith, about the community promotions? There's nothing in there?
It's all been, uh, moved to other orders like, uh, housing, community development.
That may be. Shouldn't have been got to there.
All right, well then, I'm, I'll say this and then I'll finish up here, but this has got to be better next year. Because there are so many...
It's got to be.
It's got to be better.
It has to be.
It has to. That's a got.
We'll have a...
It has to be better.
Yeah.
Teacher.
Come on back.
I can spell it.
Where were we? See, uh...
Get ready, get your wallet out and start to...
Right, that's what we're up to. Let's go back to the pages.
Actually, while, uh, while we were on break, uh, Chief Toll actually got me a copy of what you're looking at. So if you'll tell me a page number.
All right, we're looking at ninety-seven.
Okay.
Oops, nope.
Ninety-six?
Ninety-six. Ninety-six, I apologize.
No worries. I'll need to reference several things here, so let me get my...
So we're looking at, there's a remarkable line. You actually got more than you asked for.
Yep.
Hmm. So two thousand and see, two thousand and seventeen, the projected was five point seven million for, uh, person, pers- that should be personnel services.
Personnel, yeah.
Spell check, my wife would circle that. Um, the financial, they requested was five nine eight and six two nine one. So tell me, besides the four guys that we added.
Yeah, there were, there were several, uh, other, um, requests made from an essential items perspective, additional to, uh, what the ascent, what the requests were. Um, I'll go through each of those. The staffing was one of them, that was a carry, that was just added and, uh, from the mid-year budget amendment, uh, for F Y seventeen, for the four, four people. We had made a request for, um, some merit increases, uh, to, and I'll tell you what those numbers are. Eleven thousand, seven forty-three, uh, for that. And, uh, several promotions to be made, um, totaling forty-seven, five sixty. And, uh, the creation of a quartermaster slash mechanics position, so, which is a civilian position, uh, for the fire department. Um, and that was fifty, that's in the budget at fifty-six thousand. I should have it here in front of me. Fifty-six thousand, seven hundred thousand, fifty-six, seven hundred. And then the final one was, um, a, uh, reclass for one of our officers to, uh, the newly formed fire marshal's position. That, that should total, should total somewhere in the neighborhood of an additional three hundred and six thousand dollars.
About right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, as you know, we met with the, uh, committee, personnel committee this morning.
I, I do, but I do not know what that discussion was.
Okay. Um, actually, it was, it was very similar to the discussion we had with the police relative to, um, there appears to be a perception, whether it's reality or not, remains to be seen, but we need to talk about it, of, uh, and it affects, in their minds, retention and recruitment. And that is, it's not exactly compression, but it's of pay grades when promotions and length of service come.
Yep.
And, uh, we went over it with the police and I think we have an issue.
Yep.
And I think we may have the same issue in the fire service. And I just want to know, make sure you're aware of it.
Mm-hmm.
And make sure that we can, at another time, come back and visit that to make sure that we're, number one, following our policies that we need to do, but also are they correct?
Yeah.
Does it encourage people to want to move? Now, we all know that some people don't want to be officers.
Right.
I was one of them.
Right.
You know, they have no desire to do that. But there are some who may be... Wait a minute, for the additional responsibility, am I, am I getting compensated or should I stay where I am?
Yeah.
And that's a bad spot to be.
One of, one of the things that we identified very early on from the evergreen pay study, uh, was the, um, there is, there is, there's zero separation in the grades. You know, a firefighter, E M T is a two, paramedics a four, that's the only separation. Then a lieutenant's a five, a captain's a six, assistant chief's a seven.
Right.
Deputy's eight.
Right.
So, so when you, when you talk about promoting, if you promoted a firefighter to lieutenant, well, that's, that, that's okay. You can get them pretty much in line. But when you promote a paramedic to lieutenant, they're leapfrogging well above senior lieutenants in grade and, and there's just, because there's just...
And firefighters who have five years.
Yeah, and there's just not enough separation between the grades. And, and what we've tried to do is we've looked at it a little different way. One of the, one of the things I'm sure you heard this morning was the application of our promotional policies as relates to employee handbook, whether it's four or eight percent depending on the grade and steps. Um, the, you, it's one of the things that we, we have struggled with and will continue to struggle with until we try to figure out how to rectify that. And, but it's a really, it's a, it's a bigger, it's a bigger fish to fry than, than just talking about four and twelve, or eight and twelve percent.
Absolutely.
Um, it, it has to do with who we currently have looking forward. Chief Toll did a lot of internal studying on where our people are and if this happened and this would happen. And we feel like we've got a pretty good idea of where, where to do that. Um, but again, it, it only, our solution only works if we, and we've done this in the past where we've done certain studies and we've said that, uh, we're going to move the lower grades, but you don't touch the upper grades. Well, that, that's really where you start to get into this leapfrogging over various things. And, and, uh, so Chief Toll did a lot of work on trying to figure out how to rectify that. We feel like we've got a pretty good handle on it, but it's not going to help us in the application of the four and twelve percent based on our current promotional policies and handle.
Right. And that's going to have to be, I think that's where you have to fix it.
Yeah.
And then, um, but I will caution you. Do it greenfield, don't do it based on the personnel you have.
No, okay, yeah.
That's a, that's a pitfall.
Yeah.
Because you have to say...
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Right.
Who's there.
Right.
If they get to that, then the next step is this and et cetera. Because if you start matching people, it screws it all up.
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about very early on was modeling what the police department had already begun to, to look at, which was, which was banning your, your folks up into one to five, fi- ten to, you know, six to ten, ten to fifteen, or, I just messed that up, but you, you understand.
Yeah.
Banning people up in those bands so that, you know, it doesn't matter where you're at. If you promote to this place, you're in the one to five range.
Right.
Or the zero to five range. And it doesn't matter.
And you can't get into a position where you're getting promoted and have less.
Correct. So, so again, but that, but that's a, that's a much larger...
Yes.
Separation.
Yes.
That really has to be viewed and looked at in a, in a more spatial way than, than the fo- a focused way, which I, I tend to agree with you.
Good, okay, we're on the same page.
Thank you.
Other questions about that?
No, and, and I know that they brought it up and whether there's a solution to it or not, they were talking about the overtime scale. Um, and I think part of it was, uh, they, one mentioned was reduction in cycles to allow for more overtime or to allow for overtime.
What does that mean?
I guess they had it where some guys would continually call in.
They get comp time now, correct?
No.
They don't get comp time.
They, well, they can get one or the other. They can get str- they can get straight time based on the F L S A federal standards. Uh, we can work all of our firefighters two hundred and twelve hours in a two twenty-eight day period before premium time, which would be time and a half, is, uh, is, is paid. So what our firefighters get now is anything below two hundred and twelve hours in a twenty-eight day period, they get straight time compensated for it. Or if they elect, they can receive comp time for it. It's their choice, isn't that correct, Chief?
That is correct.
Yeah, they were, they were, they were talking about, they, they, their, their specific request, and we've had this discussion before, is that, you know, many, there are places that have bargained or contracted, uh, through their collective bargaining agreement that they, they, uh, basically supersede or, or go above and beyond F L S A standards and start paying premium time for every hour, not, not matching the two hundred and twelve hour threshold. And, and that's probably what they were referring to when they had the discussion with you, I'm guessing, because I wasn't privy to it.
Yeah, I think that's probably...
Reduction.
Yeah, they were leaning that way.
Yeah.
But that doesn't, I mean, just...
Uh, but from the employer base, we're following the F L S A guidelines. Um, you know, we had, we had several, as you can tell, based on the increase in our personnel services that you so eloquently pointed out to us. We have several, several items of things that we pushed forward, merit increases, promotions, all those things that, you know, adding the discussion about having premium time, uh, was not really on this year's agenda for us.
And they, and they actually said that they appreciate that piece of it.
And we, and we've had this discussion with our folks and we're, we're keenly aware of that. Um, and, and we would like to rectify that at some point, but it's going to take a, it's going to take a broader discussion with human resources professionals and the mayor and, you know, to, 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 really, because all, all we're, all we would then be doing is just saying, okay, we know what the F L S A standards are, we're going to go above and beyond F L S A and start paying our people premium time for every hour work. And I'm, I'm not opposed to that and I don't think council would be opposed to that if we did it in a measured way and, and figured out this is really what it's going to, what it's going to get us. Does that make sense, councilman?
Absolutely. And then one last thing is, uh, they mentioned about compensation for additional certifications.
Yes.
I don't know if that's something that's on the line.
It is in here.
We talked about that last year.
It's in, it's in here, it's, it's currently funded in the mayor's budget. Um, we had requested, you may recall, we had this conversation last year, we're calling them stipends.
Right.
Right?
Dive team.
Yes.
All those special trainings, a fire apparatus driver operator.
Yep.
Uh, acting lieutenant, acting officer positions, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we presented that last year, it was funded at half a year for F Y seventeen. In F Y eighteen, we had asked for it, uh, to be moved to its full year funding, which is fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and it was funded still at half year through the mayor's budget. So it's at twenty, it's still at twenty-five thousand. Um, so that is, that, that goes right to...
And we expended that twenty-five thousand dollars last, or in this current year?
Well, we, we just did because we went through our promotional processes and got everybody squared away. So it was a one-time lump sum payment to, to those folks who qualified themselves to, to receive those stipends. Right? Um, but as, it was a, it was a request made by us to fund it at fifty, which was the original request for F Y seventeen, and the mayor, the mayor couldn't, couldn't fund it.
They haven't expended it yet.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's in, it's, it's to be, it's literally in the hands of the payroll clerk.
Yeah, it's, it's like this pay period or something, yeah, it's...
It's not, I just officially, it's not, it's not.
I'm sorry.
It's not out the door, just all...
But it's, we're preparing for it to be out the door.
Okay.
That goes right to the part of what that request was.
There was some discussion on how we were going to pay for the stipend. Uh, whether it was going to be divided up over pay periods where every pay period you would get a small amount of it or if it was going to be a one-time...
Lump sum.
Check.
Yeah.
Lump sum. So we finally got clarification and we're supposed to meet with finance to show the amount that each person's supposed to receive in the one-time bank.
And the pros and cons are, you know, you do it as a lump sum and becomes a nice little, uh, reward for your employees.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the con to that would be then that if someone lost their specific certification or failed to recertify for their stipend and you've already paid them, their stipend is to recouping that money. So there's a, there's a pro for paying it over time, um, so you can manage it easier. But there's, there's, there's a pro and con for each way to do it, so. Other questions about personnel services?
Yeah, well, I have...
Tell me what page.
Where are we? I'm not, well, I can't find it because I can't even see these numbers with my glasses. Please, tell me about it. Um, talk to me about structure, uh, line officer, captains, lieutenants.
Yes.
That, that seems to be a topic that has come up. Where, how does, how does it work now? Captain at sixteen?
I'm going to let Chief Scott or Chief Toll talk about where they're assigned.
Where are, I mean, do we have, I guess the question is, do we have captains?
I think they're afraid that, uh, moving lieutenants to captains is going to eliminate the lieutenant's position.
Yes.
I think that's probably what they're...
Yes, that's what they're afraid of.
It's going to eliminate the grade, the grade is still there.
Yeah, it's not our intent with this, with this budget to eliminate a lieutenant's pay grade. It's not our intent.
So you're going to have captains and lieutenants?
We, right now, we'll have captains and then moving forward, it allows us the flexibility to, to have lieutenants. Uh, it's still in there, but right now to fix this, the problem that we talked about earlier is we've got to start getting some separation in there. And to do that, we, we were re, we were, I won't call it reclass, we're promoting lieutenants to captains, which gave us enough degree of separation there to fix the current, what's currently going on in the system.
So then any lieutenant you bring in would go?
Correct.
So then you still maintain the delta?
That's, that's the goal of the program. But again, it still needs that, um, very spatial, uh, evaluation of the entire system. And, and is there a need to put us a grade in between there somewhere to, to offer up that, uh, that space to be able to do that in, in, given, given the consideration for banning folks in that zero to five, six to ten, you know?
So every station has a cap?
At least.
At least one.
Yeah. Our new station state, the newly staffed station, station one is one captain, three lieutenants. Right.
So sixteen has four.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the ca- and the captain act...
Interesting discussion of the line.
Yeah, well, if, if you're familiar, you're familiar with... You're familiar with, um, what a mun- a municipal department in big city, New Jersey, New York, you're familiar with, you know, a house, a house will have a captain and three lieutenants.
Right.
You know, and the captain works, serves as the station captain.
Correct.
Who, who manages all the affairs of repair and maintenance of the station and does all that. That's kind of the concept we'd like to get to.
Okay.
Uh, and, but we're not, we're not currently in a position to do that.
Okay, fair enough, that answers it.
Did I, did I say that correctly, Chief?
That answers it. Okay, good. Let's move on.
I only have, um... Is it my turn?
Wait a minute.
Uh-oh.
Just saying.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, thought it was my turn.
Yeah, no, you go ahead.
All right, I only have, I only have, uh, a couple of things to, to discuss relating to things that have been or, or, you know, will, will need to be funded moving forward. Um, given, given some of the things, the reductions that had to be made over time, I wanted to, uh, just let council, make council aware of a few things that it might want to consider relating to, um, the ability to fund a couple of items here, so let me make sure...
So now this is off your critical items list?
It is.
Okay.
Essentially, yeah, critical items, yes.
Okay.
Um... I just want to make sure, because I, I have received this from, uh, my good friend, Mr. Coridry, and I want to make sure that I'm not misspeaking here based on what he's...
He would never take anything off of that.
What he's given me. I, so I, Keith knows, I keep a strong eye on him, I'm a, I'm keenly aware of Keith's...
You know, the two, I just see the two of you in a room with your, uh, calculator.
Keith, Keith keeps a chain on his wallet.
Mutual sacrifice.
That's right.
I don't blame you, Keith.
Keith keeps a chain on his wallet when I'm in the room and, uh... Um, one of the things that, um, I want to, I want to get to, uh, discuss them is, um, yeah, janitorial services. Uh, there was, there was a, uh, request to, uh, increase our janitorial services by thirty-seven oh eight. And that was the addition of Fire Station Two, taking care of, making sure that the, uh, the deep clean, the deep cleaning was taken care of at Fire Station Two. Uh, that didn't make it into the, it didn't make the cut. Um, so that's a, that's a consideration for council.
Is that three thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars?
Three seven oh eight, that's correct. And I think, I think that was it. See, I told you my list was small.
Three...
Hold it.
What was it, Tony?
That's in...
Uh, three thousand, seven hundred and eight.
For the year?
Three thousand?
Three thousand, seven hundred and eight for the year?
Uh, additional.
Deep cleaning of the station?
Yeah, additional to what we currently... It's, it's, it's additional to what we currently fund. Our budget, our current budget is ten...
Oh, okay.
Our current budget is twelve, eight, sixteen, and the addition of Station Two is thirty-seven oh eight.
Oh, okay.
So that includes things like, um, V C T, uh, stripping wax, you know?
Gotcha.
Okay.
I just saw a deep clean or something from television that I'm missing since I don't have it.
Shampooing carpets, uh, doing the stuff that firefighters, firefighters routinely clean everything else.
Gotcha, okay.
For thirty-seven, for thirty-seven oh eight, there you go.
Less than that.
All right.
Wait a minute.
Thirty-six oh eight.
I'll, I'll throw in...
It's a bit.
I'll, I'll throw in Justin Byrd to help him.
Right, yeah.
I love to clean now.
All right, so that's, that's on, that goes on that list too that we've got.
It's a bird.
Actually.
I think that was it, Mr. President, for me. That was the only thing that we really were concerned with, um, moving forward.
And that's the only thing off the critical list?
Any other, uh, any other questions? Good job. But I will tell you that the, the crew this morning was appreciative of what David and you, they were very complimentary and.
Good. There, uh, and, and we try really hard to continue to meet with the, meet with the folks and get their, get their input on, you know, what the, what, what the folks want so that we can at least have those for considerations to come before council, so. So most of what you see in our presentation is centered around the total input from everyone that we have. This year, council may not know, this year, um, I formed an internal group called, I call it the Budget Management Team, which is, for the very first time, at least in my tenure over thirty years, was where we, we pulled together representatives from each of the work groups and, and each of the volunteer fire companies and brought them to the table and said, let's, I want, I wanna hear from you. What is, what are your needs, what are your wants, what are your, you know, we put all the wish list up there. And then that group actually went through each of the budget requests and said yea or nay. So as a, as a cohesive team, we actually put together the plan, the, the budget you see before you. And I thought it was a, a great exercise. It also allowed those folks to see the budget in its, in its planning process and not just in the end process.
It's a lot easier when you have buy-in from the front instead of waiting in the back.
So I thought that worked really well this year. We're gonna continue that in the future, so.
Good. Thanks.
And I, I don't know if in the future, maybe next year, when, I know we had the, the two gentlemen this morning, but would it be pertinent to ask the volunteer companies to have somebody come in as well?
Yeah, I've, I've asked for that for the last couple of years. And one of the things that we keep missing the mark on and, and I'm as, I don't, I don't follow up enough with it is when we send out our, our council.
Schedule?
Schedule. Uh, we basically duplicate it from year after year to make it easier on ourselves clerically. And I never, I don't follow through enough to make sure that we get a place at the table for the volunteers. So that's, kinda falls on me and I'd like to continue to do that.
Can you make a note, Kim, to make sure that's on there next year? I think it's a valid point, cause we certainly have good support from the guys.
Absolutely. Again, mostly that's my fault. I, I say it and I don't follow up with it and therefore it just gets lost in the shuffle, so.
Okay. Good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Take care, have a good afternoon.
Yep.
That's the book I want. Keep like that.
What's that? Thanks, Ken.
That's just the way it's set up. I know that's set up after all these years. No, no, this is, I don't know the colors.
What's next, that mayor office?
No. Uh.
Say, everyone with you, please.
No, this is not gonna be long now. Cause you're, you're mainly. I'd like to find, I'd like to see where we are though.
Yeah.
I might catch a couple for my grandchildren, but I don't want them for my.
Is attorney in here?
There you go.
Yeah.
I can't.
Waterworks.
Three o'clock.
I don't need enough dough to.
It's on three o'clock today.
Okay.
We're three, we're three page number.
City clerk, you get one too?
I'm late.
You better ask, um.
It's three o'clock, it's three o'clock today.
City clerk next. It won't take long.
To do what?
It, for city clerk.
Mark's coming in at three-thirty, so I know five minutes will.
Okay, go ahead.
Enough time.
I'm gonna, actually, I'm turning to her page right here.
The least.
Since you have it.
Forty and forty-one.
I'm good.
Wait a minute, I can't see, my eyes are just gone.
This is why I usually don't schedule four hours, but.
It's on page thirty-nine.
Forty.
Thirty-nine?
Oh, I'm sorry, your, your goals are on.
Yeah, the goals.
Did you write these goals?
Um, yes.
Oh, I wrote my two. Oh, here go Mark.
She stuck her out.
You said thirty-one?
She has to, she has to write her own because she's clerk of the year.
I said thirty-eight, that's right.
The goals.
Let me tell you, I've lived for some budget meetings.
You said thirty-one, thirty-eight.
Thirty-nine.
I was gonna say, no.
Sorry. The goals do not impact the budget, our budget at all, but they're, um, worth mentioning.
Yep.
That we still are trying to get the packet out at least four days prior, and I'd like to get it, get it out before that. But we do manage four days. I really prefer to do five or six, but, um, we'll keep working on that. And, um, we'll attempt to update on a quarterly basis. I actually think I put, um, every three months, but, um, so, or every four months, but we'll see about that. We're, we're doing it twice a year and we just did start updating the code twice a year. So, um, that number two we'll work towards. And number three, to work with the departments on records disposal. We're doing really well with that. Diane is the records, um, manager. And she's been, um, recently working with HCD, Susan Phillips, on, um, they needed a refresher course when they made the move from Church Street over here. They left some records behind and had never really gotten rid of anything. And, um, she's worked really well with the police department, internal services, getting rid of hundreds of, um, you know, records. Public Works, purchasing. So, um, we're attempting to, um, transform our, uh, schedules to include electronic records. So that will require scanning, um, and we have to abide by the state's guidelines as far as clarity and, you know, of the sheets that we actually scan and.
Do we have a contract with, uh, disposal?
Two. We have LSE and.
Iron Mountain?
No. Another one.
The one from Baltimore. Shred it?
Maybe, maybe. We have two that we, um, have prices from that, that they'll, you know, go ahead and, and.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, that have given us good prices. So, um, anyway, um, we're doing really well with that. And it doesn't, like I said, it doesn't impact our budget. Each department pays for their own shredding and, and, uh, we just facilitate it and, you know. Takes a bit of time, but Diane works well and I help her when, uh, she needs it. And, um, as far as personnel services, operating, we reduced our operating by the four percent. So we're still, um, good with that. And our personnel increased by the two percent, um, step. Thank you. Thank you very much for that.
You've reduced your operating budget by four percent?
It, it wasn't at four that we were, yes, it was about a seven hundred and, seven hundred dollars. We were able to reduce it.
You were asked to do that?
Um, yeah. We, uh, from the initial work that we, worksheets that we did with the budget.
At the, at the mayor level, uh, we, we, uh, we had a gap. One of the steps to close it was is all of the, the accounts that had discretion were cut by four percent. Meaning some were more, like the phone bill now, but.
Exactly.
It's a, it's a small number.
Uh, yeah.
The, uh, the one thing that I, that we had made a change, I'm just curious. I had told the, the clerk that if the information that we needed to get the packet out to us so that we would have ample time to look at it. If it wasn't done, if she didn't have the information on time, it was to be pulled from the agenda. Now, I, I've only had a number of times when we've requested, we've had requests to add the item even though the number, the, wasn't there. So I think that that, have you seen an improvement in the, in the, getting the information? Cause we haven't had to pull it many things from the agenda, right?
Not many things. It, it still takes some work, you know.
But you're also participating on this, in the staff meeting, which has helped.
And that has helped a lot.
Okay.
Yes, there's still, it, it's just a matter of, um, you know, some of them forgetting that there's a memo required and.
Well.
Or forgetting to do a resolution.
Yeah, and, and I understand that, but it's like everything else.
But it helps a lot.
If you don't, if you don't, uh, if you don't pull something once in a while that isn't there, then everybody's gonna say, well, that's all right. I just get it in Friday. And that leaves us less time to review the stuff.
And maybe there's something that to come up for the long term, maybe a, an SOP written for certain types of legislation so that they know that, oh, well, I do gotta have a memo with this or, right, I need to have either a resolution or a ordinance for this.
They know.
Yeah, yeah. So at least, you know, a checklist.
But I, yeah, but I, I can be a good nag.
Yeah.
I know, but I can, yeah, I chase them down.
Well, I think it's helped since you're in the.
I could see you doing it.
Not ashamed to say it. But, you know, our department probably is, it, it is the smallest, but we, you know, we're not antiquated or unchanging, but we just sort of are, kind of, um, balance out maybe all the changes that occur. We, we haven't really had any structural changes at all, but.
So the number that's in here, the one fifty-eight, nine thirty, nine twenty-three?
Yes.
You're comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
With no decrease in performance?
No.
Okay.
What, and, and I guess maybe this is just a question. When I look at, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, there was a jump. And then there's a decrease from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. What's, what were the two factors in that?
Is that elections?
Well, I mean, it's six, it's almost.
That was fifteen, so, twenty-fifteen.
That would've been fifteen would've been.
It would've been sixteen though, FY sixteen, so that would, would've been more.
But that's not under you.
That was a separate department too.
That's under, that's under something else.
Yeah, um. And operating.
Is it, is the, is last year's, was it our?
You know.
Participation in more events?
No, that's under us.
Well, that's under us.
That's clerk, yes, and elections as I say.
What two years are we comparing?
Sixteen actual.
Sixteen had a travel of seventy-five hundred. That was a high number compared to what we had this year, like thirty-five hundred.
Travel expenses?
I think they were traveling. More, more traveling, they were going to some meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
She's gonna have to, she's got a ring of being clerk of the year. She has to have her sash and. She's not gonna be able to complete her.
She's a clayer.
Tiara at least.
Does she get her own place at parade this year?
No, I was doing cancel, you're doing.
She should.
Clerk?
Clerk.
Yeah, sorry.
Get her own float in the Christmas parade.
No, that's gonna happen.
Now Keith's got a lot.
Yeah, I don't know what the big difference was. Can I look it up and just?
Yeah, I was just curious. I just, I just saw that one year it went up and then now it's kinda, I was just curious. Something that might've been, I, I know.
But the total in sixteen was one fifty-one and the total was one fifty-eight. That's not a big difference.
Did you go to, uh?
Well, as a percent it is.
MML Solomon's Island?
No.
You didn't?
No, you did, no.
But you did go to something else.
Computer, they went to computer eighteen.
I went to Ocean City.
So there was an increase of two thousand.
I went to Milwaukee, but I don't think it was.
We're gonna talk about some big numbers in a minute.
The year before.
Okay. I thought there was, you went somewhere.
Forgive us, Mark, we're getting punchy.
You and Diane both went somewhere one day. But I don't, I don't, I don't think it was.
The conferences.
Quarterly meetings and.
Okay, if you're comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it.
Yep, I'm good.
All right.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman, come on up.
What page are we on?
Do you have this big presentation?
Sixty-two, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I, it looks like you guys have been fried with sweets enough today. I don't know.
Well, we have, so far, the only thing we haven't got is some Rasa-Rati, but that's okay.
My inclination is usually to offer alcohol, but that might affect the work product, so.
I can bet you it will.
Okay, floor's yours.
All right.
Where are we, where are we going?
Um, it's my understanding that, uh, the current budget proposal is what, two eighty-four?
Four-four.
Okay. Which is basically the actual expenditures from last year. They had originally done a budget amendment that would've taken us up to two ninety-eight, basically. And we ended up with a fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollar surplus, which obviously was not spent. Um, and that was just because at the end of the year, again, I mean, the problem, the amount that's been budgeted, I think, is sufficient unless we have another fire department.
Right.
Issue.
Right.
Cause that just, that just eats up hours like crazy when you get something like the, uh, the volunteer firemen pulling out and, and, you know, they get all their stuff involved.
Yep.
The county FIA doesn't tell you, you gotta have a legal contingency too.
Yeah, I think, I think that's. I think the key to good budgeting is basically to have a, a contingency fund that you can draw from when necessary. Because I'm not out there doing anything that hasn't been assigned to me.
Right.
And that's where I do.
Do we still have the other lines in modern sewer for five thousand and something else for seventy-five hundred, something like that? I have good, I have a question.
I was just, you know, you know, I mean, I was gonna say, this year, I think we're gonna have to come at you for a budget amendment as well for a couple of items, namely the fire department and the, uh, and then the reorganization. Where we're gonna have to go through and double check and make sure everything's good. And also the other time consuming issue is, is the, um, the fee schedule. Cause that was, you know, just came on with Keith and everybody within the last couple of weeks. And we haven't been able to sort of fit it in along the year as it's been going on. It was just, now we have to make sure it's right. You know, how many weeks do we have to do that, Keith? Do you know?
Well, we don't, I don't think the plan was to try, not to try to fix the entire code.
No, no, not for the fee, but, but we need to make sure that we have a fairly inclusive fee schedule that's easy to understand. Um, and that, uh, we, I think we discussed it last night. Something's gonna go out to all the department heads asking for their input again to save my time and Keith's time as much as possible.
Yeah, the, I, you know, if we can take advantage of the prep work and essentially then it becomes a audit and a, then the final handoff, we'd be a lot better off. Cause I know that that was, we addressed that and that did help when we started having the departments do some of the work and then give you a document that you can look at.
Well, we, yeah, we, we were fortunate and an intern actually did search the, the entire code for all of the occurrences of fees and even the spreadsheet. So we were, we were starting with that, so reconciling, uh, document. And, uh, and the best the department heads to compare the fee schedule to that, and it references the code. So we got a good start on that.
So they're, they're actually working on that now, the, the department heads?
Well, you've seen that, that the schedule I'm talking about was.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I haven't.
Yeah, but the.
I just wanted, I think I sent you an email today, which you've been too busy to read, that says we need to tell the department heads what we want from them. So that's all.
Right, right.
But again, it's, it's just, there's, there's always something that gets thrown into the mix that we didn't anticipate. But, um, you know, the, the responsibility during this year has been up. We've taken a greater role in working with Kim to make sure that you get a good agenda package. We're going in and looking directly at what the department heads have done in Asana to try and make that and streamline that process. And I think that's been working really well until we all got jammed up in the last couple of weeks.
Do you have any idea what that number, uh, might be?
For what?
The adjust, the, uh, amendment, budget amendment?
Um.
Based on the work that we've done, cause I, we haven't been billed for that yet, right?
No, you have not. Um, let me see. How about if I get that to you? I've, I've got a bunch of numbers here, but I hate to go on the record.
That's fine.
Until I.
No.
I would say with all of the changes and everything that we're expecting, uh, we might, you know, it's gonna be, what was it last year? It's probably gonna be close to, you know, twenty-four, five thousand dollars that we're gonna be asking for to get all that work done. Which I understand has to be done by the end of the year. If we could push that off till next year.
We can't soon, can we?
But.
Never mind, I'm just.
It's quarter long.
Yeah, I just, never mind. I'm just angry, but anyway.
Oh, I know, and that's, it's.
Oh, I, I get it.
Well, I mean, in all actuality, we should probably find out where the mayor wants to find the money, because in all honesty, he's the one who came up with the changes. So let him come up with the money. I mean.
Really?
There are good changes and I'm sure they're worked out well, but there is the added that it has to be changed in the, uh.
Charter and the code.
Yeah.
Which we're focusing on the charter first.
Right. Okay, any other questions? The, the only thing I, I'd like to say, uh, is that, uh, I'm, I'm pleased that we seem to resolve the majority of issues for last minute catches. There's been an improvement and it's been noticeable, uh, so I, I wanna thank you for that. We have not had the drastic, oh, wait a minute, we got the wrong document, et cetera, and that's, that's improved dramatically, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, we're happy to.
Okay.
Try and make it work better.
Thanks, Mark.
I like it when it works better.
Yeah, me too, it's always fun when things work right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
See you later. And I'll get you a number.
Okay.
That's best I can ask of me.
You should take some cookies with you.
Run out of two pens.
Come on back, get some. No, you like, you, if I did, it could hurt you.
Break, let's take a, let's take a five-minute break, and I think that what we're gonna do.
Oh, my god.
Uh, we're gonna end, we're gonna end with the mayor today, okay, cause I'm about fried.
I see it.
Council, Mr. Council President, if you really want the truth in the mayor's office, I, all I was gonna ask you to do is take that extra position and put it on our list to discuss when we got to the end of it. I mean, I, I don't really need to know what Donna spends in paper books.
Okay. Anybody else have any issues with it? I, I've looked it over, I don't have any issues.
No, I, I.
So you wanna bring that up?
Just if it's something like we talked about.
We'll put it on the list.
Yeah, just put it on the list.
Okay. We can do that.
I missed it.
The, um.
We approved the mayor's and we have a, uh, goes on the list of add backs, the extra, the extra, what do they call it?
The extras, the deputy city.
Deputy city administrator.
So really, just, we're just waiting for Bill Garrett and then I can get him out of the way.
Could do you?
So you wanna do Bill?
I don't know, I didn't have.
He was next up, it was the mayor.
Mayor and then IT.
He's at four, do you wanna do your budget?
I'm afraid, I'm very afraid.
I didn't even put something.
Do we wanna do our budget? Uh, no, because Bill's at four.
Time is a quarter or four?
We can do ours, are we on here?
Yeah.
Where are we?
You would switch with, um, procurement.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, let's do ours then, let's do ours quick.
We're on thirty-six.
Who wrote these? Oh, we're only one page too.
Yep. I'm gonna put an official.
Above spending on the city council and, I don't know, uh, it's not true.
What'd you say?
Nothing, I just keep forgetting that you have the seventeen approved, the seventeen adjusted, the seventeen projected, uh.
Yeah, you just gotta look at the, the only thing that I look at is the adjust, the, uh, projected and the, uh, mayor's budget. He cut us, hmm. Now, we had, one of the things that, that we've had, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, is that we have more participation from more people this year in MML things and Lesma and ESAM.
Yes.
And, and you're, and if that continues next year, this budget reflects that.
Yes.
Based on how we, I mean, I don't go to the, some of those other ones, I do go to the MML.
Four of you are going to MML for the fall time, this time though.
For the convention?
Yes.
Four of us.
Four.
Okay. Okay.
But the other two, the other two, I just can't, I mean, one.
In the fall.
It's hard.
I think ESAM, I think I got a, a monthly committee, no, I have a monthly, one of my committees conflicts with that.
Yeah.
Well, it happens again, this, this week, we have a conflict.
Yeah, and I have one too, so.
Lesma, I can't make just because of work, so.
I think you have plenty of, plenty in there, I think last year we bumped it up a whole lot.
Yeah, we did.
I, I think initially some of us were going to some of those, but as the year got on, it just.
Yeah, and last year, we, was the first year we divided, we, it was all included in travel, but there's training involved, so we have the two accounts now, which makes it easier to keep track of how much, when you go away for hotel, which is for fall, MML, and also for gas reimbursement and for some of, for some of the, Lesma, we put that on travel as well.
So we're comfortable with this number?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Do we, okay, I'll ask that later, that'll go on my list.
Don't push it.
Any, any questions? Okay.
What's that?
I didn't know if you wanted to.
Can we see if Bill, can you start over or? Bill Garrett?
You want me to?
Yeah. Is anybody getting warm in here, or is it?
Uh-uh, nothing to show.
It's been warm.
Uh-uh, I feel good.
I just threw down all those cookies.
I'm drunk? Yeah. Three, three cups of that, three cups of that size coffee and container of water. I'm crashing, I am crashing. I was wired for three and a half hours and now I'm on the way down.
You gotta find that coffee.
Uh-uh.
Might be good. Fill it up.
No, I'm done. IT, let's prepare.
Okay, what did I just do?
There's a warning, that's, uh, the GIS landed there, you haven't heard that already, that'll be one of the pieces of information that, so the new, new GIS, two new GIS positions that landed into the IT department.
You know, have all, I hate to ask this question, cause I know, I think I know the answer. Have all the new combined departments this year versus last year been adjusted for last year?
Not clear.
Uh, we've had some, uh, some like housing, okay? The new department contains three, is different than it was last year, correct?
Different personnel.
Yeah, different, well, actually, more personnel, because has the net last year's numbers been adjusted to include those new personnel?
In those, uh, in the booklet, yes, in the booklet.
It had.
It got combined.
Oh, it did, so you combined last year's number?
Community, uh, development.
Oh, fine. I was hoping that's the way it was.
Twenty-five-three, you won't see that word in there.
No.
It got, it got added in.
Right, okay, okay. That's fine.
Sam's or the, the round trades?
Yeah, this'll be the hardest session, obviously.
Which one?
Today's.
Oh, session, yeah, I always thought you mean the one that was upcoming.
Oh, no, 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 no.
This is pretty straightforward.
Page sixty-four.
Well, the two GIS people are because we're coming out of public works and that's where GIS was, correct?
It's a hodgepodge in that it used to be about sixteen thousand, that for some reason, the county came up with that as our share of some of the resources that, that we benefited from, that they paid for. And that was spread for like five or six years now, or longer, between parking and public works and fire, and they all had this flat amount of that sixteen, so we moved all that sixteen into here and then moved that help, you know, started seeding the money that was needed, but the two new positions, uh, in part were paid for by the savings from the planning of zone, because planning of zone used to provide some of those services.
It's forty years ago. Wow.
So now we're getting them out of part, we have a planner and we have two GIS positions.
How did you then, so you really can't look back at the two thousand seventeen projected?
Yeah, no.
It's not apple, it's apples and oranges.
Whatever's worth it, yeah, that projected column, uh, uh, things moved so fast that, uh, that when it got published, uh, it got concerted, but in, in the future, that wouldn't even be there, cause it's just automatically a number that munis produces that means, means very little. So you wanna look at the revised budget to see where we are for, um.
The adjusted budget.
The adjusted budget, yeah.
Okay. But in this case, again.
For this year, but in that case, uh, the, the GIS from all of those other locations get moved with it.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that makes sense.
Yeah, this one's, this one's different.
This is, this is not the way the others work.
No, this, it's different in that.
Okay.
Two new positions got added.
Gotcha.
And, uh, and. And it'll be under the direction of Bill.
Mr. Council President, one thing that I had on bills, to be honest with you, is that there was no mention in those goals about wifi downtown and the reliability of that.
Yeah, and actually, nothing on the impact that the broadband may have. But isn't that tied in also with the cell?
Yeah, I'm not sure where that, that could be in a whole different parts.
Cause the cell. I don't know where it is.
You, you're asking me where the cell is?
Well, if you know where that would.
Where the, now, he, he said before that there's a possibility, I've heard him say that the, at some point, the downtown wifi could become obsolete because there are other places to get that, so at first, meaning as, as time has gone on, there are other ways to get coverage. But he'll speak, he'll speak.
You see the mayor, the mayor's like, well, Bill would know, wouldn't he?
Bill?
Yeah, all right, am I, don't bother the mayor, he's got enough, just extract the coverage, Julia's job, which wouldn't happen if we had the.
Deputy city administrator.
Now, when you said another deputy, you know there's, uh, the city administrator and then another position is in the budget.
Yes.
Correct.
We're talking about another position.
Another position, okay. Yeah, I've heard that.
I won't let that, will I?
I hadn't heard that.
Huh?
I hadn't heard, I hadn't heard about that as much.
You're not the team.
Yeah, but I was just saying that my numbers are like, it's like a little, little mini earthquake.
There's no mix there, don't make.
You have to know the secret code.
Okay.
It's in the.
They're gonna, they're gonna work for free.
Uh, no, no, that's not true.
I was just getting.
No, we, it was another discussion.
We'll be putting the retirement money away for you. At a rate fifty times.
There goes, okay, anyway. Yeah, we're, this shouldn't be bad.
It is funny though, with the onset of technology, how quickly the police department was created and you can see how it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And I don't know whether or not that's a cottage industry for. It's like new cell phones, you know?
Did they send you guys, uh, the budget analysis and budget detail reports? So I sent them, I sent them to, um, to Kim to distribute to you guys, I don't know.
Well, yeah, sometimes little.
Cause I noticed you had, you didn't have a hard copy, I thought maybe you had an electronic.
No, no, we did not, I will check with that when Kim gets back.
But that's the line, that's the same report we always had, this guy here and we need that.
Yeah, we will still.
Draw that, you should, you should, you know, you're planning on having that, right?
Yeah, but doing all the research at home and then coming in with just questions, which we still will do.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Come on up, Bill. Kim, can you make sure we get the budget detail, remember the big book?
I do.
Can you make sure we get that electronically?
Oh, God.
Does anybody want it, right, use this, we're gonna kill fifteen trees, but does anybody want a hard copy? Jim, do you want a hard copy or are you okay electronically?
Electronic.
Electronic's fine.
Okay.
Would that be, that would probably drop box, do it one.
Do you have it, or?
I've, I've emailed it to you.
Okay, well then.
But they're not, they're not having, I think they're, yeah, okay, yeah, they're not too heavy.
Okay, hi, Bill, how are you? Good, uh, we're going over information services, uh, what we'd like you to do is just highlight some of the key goals and priorities that you have.
Okay.
And then we'll get into the budget detail.
Sure, um, our goals and priorities are gonna be to, um, maintain level of service that, that we've been, um, offering. With the addition of the new GIS division, um, the primary goal coming up is gonna be to ensure the same level of service that public works currently has with their, with their GIS division, while we do a, um, an evaluation to see how best we can serve the city as a whole. Um, so with that, that said, we're gonna be building that, uh, division out and, um, using that to kinda offer more services to the city, as well as, you know, through the, um, the website to the, these citizens as well. We're also gonna be, um, uh, rolling out a, a big upgrade to our email server, our email system this year, which is a, um, priority number one, uh, to kinda consolidate the city as well as the police department into one centralized system, so it's not two completely isolated systems the way it is now.
Okay.
What's that? I can get technical.
I know.
Where were the?
Please don't, please.
Where, yeah, where's the cell?
Where were the server being?
There isn't, it's hosted, yes, uh, we'll be using the, um, the, Microsoft, uh, has a cloud environment, it's government, authorized, it's, it's on the Fed, FedRAMP certified, which is the, um, it's a federally, um, it's a list of mandates that the federal government requires in order for it to be considered secure, um, so Microsoft through the, um, Amazon EWS Services offers a, um, a platform for government use, so we're gonna be ha- having it hosted outside, so there'll be no, um, no physical servers to buy, nothing to physically maintain, to repair, it's all gonna be hosted, um, so that, um, it's not our electricity, it's not our time being spent managing the physical hardware of the system.
Are we budgeted in there?
Yeah, it's all in here.
That's the one that the police is currently using for the cameras?
Um, no, that's a completely separate thing.
But it's a similar.
Some similar concept, yes.
Make sure that it's secure, meets all the criteria.
Yes, yes, it's a similar concept, um, it's, yeah, it's, uh, the FedRAMP is kind of the, I don't say overkill, but it's, it's, it's the, um, the top of the line when it comes to making sure something is secure, as secure as it can be, obviously, making sure it's secure and, and, uh.
Same system the Democratic Party has.
Well, we're going with two point O on that one. It's, it's had some patches.
You just, you just have to go on the other side of the table. Oh, nice.
Ouch.
You didn't have any cookies.
Would you ask them about the, your thing about the downtown wifi?
Yeah, that's what I have, we have, yeah, Dr. Archen has a question and I do too, relative to, um, next year and actually from now on, the wifi downtown, we talked about this last year. It's spotty at best.
It's coming out.
Okay, so tell us about that.
Okay, um, working with the mayor's office to determine where, where we'd like to kind of move it to, be at parks, be at other neighborhoods, be at wherever we decide we're gonna put it, um, when that system was put in, there was nothing there. It was, um, I believe at the time, uh, there were, I think, two different connections, one halfway up the plaza and one on the very, very end. And they were not open, they were, you had to have a password to get into it. Since we've put the wifi project in there, there's now, I mean, there are dozens and dozens of wifi connections available to whoever wants to use them, both secured and, and open, so, um, it's the whole purpose of that project and it's what we said when we pitched it initially, was that most of these programs last, you know, three to five years, in which case, the area where they're, they're in, if it's successful, bill builds up enough to, to sustain its own wireless footprint, so to speak, um, so then the system can come out, uh, just because it's not needed anymore, there are available connections for the people to use while they're down on the plaza shopping and doing everything else. So, um, the idea is now that that has happened, um, you know, it's kind of a, it was a successful project, we can pull it out and then kind of repurpose that hardware wherever else we'd like to put it, uh, we're currently evaluating different options at this time.
What happens then to, how did we know, or how does, how does one know which is the secure?
Oh, when you pull it up, um, if there's a little exclamation point on your phone, your tablet, it means it's unsecured, it means that there's no password.
So don't go.
Well, you can, if, if you know, if you know it's a legitimate place, like, you know, Rhodey Joe's, or i- 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 if it's a company that you know is legitimate, if it's something like, you know, click here, you know, you probably wouldn't wanna do it, because it could be somebody trying to steal your info or, or kind of acts as a, it's called a man in the middle attack, where, where they kind of intercept all your transmissions. Um, but yeah, it's, it's kind of, um, uh, one of those things where if, if you trust it, if you know it's an establishment that is, is legitimate down, down there on the plaza, you go ahead and connect to it.
Did you say something about what broadband will mean?
Yeah, that's my question, that answers your question.
I guess, no, not really, because I'm not, I, I don't know. I thought because the broadband was coming, there would be no need for it anymore, but what you're saying is, is that because there are more people down there?
Well, the broadband is not gonna be meant for, the broadband isn't wireless. Broadband is a, it's a fiber optic connection on the plaza that, that runs to the businesses or the homes or a- any of the residents on the plaza that down there, um, that's a wired connection, they have to have, um, they have to basically go through Maryland broadband, one of their, their cooperatives.
If the broadband is gonna make the house faster, who are the people that are gonna be providing the wifi downtown? Who you say are now providing it, that we didn't have providing it?
Oh, the businesses.
You said, like you said, Rhodey Joe's.
Yeah, the businesses, the businesses have it.
Right, and if.
I use Myabellas all the time.
Yeah, and, and if the customer, say, like, you know, one of the people that live up above the shops, if they, if they go with Comcast, who's a member of Maryland broadband, they, Comcast has a, a split connection on their, on their modems.
So it's Xfinity wifi?
Exactly, exactly.
If you have, if you have Comcast, you can log into your own account, basically on somebody else's router.
Well, if, if, if you use the Xfinity, but if you use the Rhodey Joe's or Myabellas or any of the other companies. You don't, you don't receive an extra charge on your Comcast bill if you sign into, uh, Jack Key's wifi and you go by his house.
Yeah, but his is law.
Yeah, but it's like you said, on the box, on the box is basically cut in half. So one half is for Jack, one half is, and actually, the user can, can assign on their own, if, if you sign into your own router, you can turn that on or you can turn it off.
Right.
So if you have people at your house.
Then, then let me phrase my question this way, because it's not that I don't understand it, but it's gonna change tomorrow and you'll have to come up with another five people to be able to, to deal with it. What's the next step for, a- after broadband, would you suggest for downtown in terms of technology?
Um, that's a really good question, um, we'd have to think on something, see what, what's there, because with broadband, there's, there's so many different options.
There are places around the country now that you can. There are places around the country now that you can, I forget what the name of it is, you can find out which parking spaces are open, and you can reserve one.
Oh, yeah, we've got systems like that coming.
You do?
Park, parking has got a, have they, have they signed the agreement for that, where you can pay for it on your?
Oh, yeah, my, they can throw up too.
Yeah, it's, it's on the way, it's, it's just a matter of...
That, that goes with those new, with the new meters?
Yeah.
The demonstration was unreal.
Yes.
But only on that, on that kind of thing, when you can do it on your phone, you only have a certain amount of time to be in that parking space.
Right, right, you have to renew it and...
But you can renew it.
Yeah, you can do it from your phone.
From your phone.
You can...
If you're at a restaurant.
Well, I'm in Florida, you can't.
No, and here, and here you can.
Yes.
Or you can restrict it. Certain areas, you can make spaces where, if you want turnover, you don't, you don't allow it in a certain area, but if you want it where people can do it, and you don't, doesn't really matter, then you can extend.
With the, with this broadband, with the fiber going out in the downtown plaza, it really does open us up to... I don't think anything that we could think of, but it's, I mean, it really does open it up. And part of the, the agreement is that the city maintains use of a certain set number of the fiber strands, so we can do anything we want to do in that stretch, as long as we don't use more than, and then the strands can support so much data that I don't see...
Financial institution, stock-type businesses, all those things are now gonna be prime.
I would say to you, and, and to the mayor, if you know what it attracts, start attracting it now.
That's kind of what I believe the mayor's been trying to do, is bring in like the, the engineering firms and the architecture companies, bring in the big...
Fun, how about fun people? Let's do the fun people.
The fun people are already here.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Okay, moving along. Uh, let's, let's look at the budget.
Okay.
I'm on page sixty-six. You have it probably in you.
I actually don't have, I have just the munis printout.
Okay. Uh, then let's make sure the numbers coincide.
Okay.
Adjusted budget for two thousand seventeen was three seventy-nine, five seventy-seven.
Yes.
The requested budget was three sixty-one, four oh eight, and the mayor's budget was four forty-six, five oh two.
Yes.
Explain.
Well, they are adding in the GIS division.
Okay.
Which is a new position, the GIS analyst position.
Yep.
Which is gonna do a lot of the in-house programming, which should theoretically cut a lot of the, the consulting work that is currently being done through Pub, Public Works.
So, the assistant was already in there? I mean, the assistant director?
The assistant was a reclass, Mr. O'Brien. He was moved as the GIS manager, I think is what his position was before.
Yep.
He was reclassed as the assistant director to kind of oversee the GIS division, which includes his position, the new GIS analyst position to do all the programming work, as well as the, there's, there are, there's a paid internship program through the Salisbury University. Some semesters, there's one paid intern, some semesters, there are two paid interns. Right now, there are two, over the summer, there's gonna be one, and then essentially, fall and spring, there's usually two paid internships, then in summer, sometimes on winter, there's also one. But these, the off semester time, there's usually one, because they can work a lot more hours, because they're not in school. So, that's where some of that, and a lot of that is contracted out as well.
Were the interns in two thousand seventeen?
They've been there for as long as I can remember, so many, many years.
Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else? Other questions?
I would like to say that the, the big project this year, as I mentioned, was the email system. We were able to fund that level of funding, we weren't, we weren't, we didn't need to ask for additional funding by kind of doing some other, I wanna say, creative accounting, but we were able to kind of scale back some other projects, and then kind of tweak some things, that we didn't need additional funding for the, the big email system. Upgrade.
How are we overall hardware, hardware wise? I know you went through a big...
Yes, the, the consolidation plan, we are well under where I thought we would be. I want to, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but when we did all the ordering, I want to say we were tens of thousands under where I, I thought we would be in savings with this pro, this project. We're significantly under where we would have been without it. And it's gonna look that, that way again, because we're able to get better deals than I anticipated on the, on the hardware.
Can you make a one pager of where we, where we project, and where we...
No problem.
Thank you. And make sure everybody, everybody on the council gets it.
Sure.
Okay, so when the new server goes on, online, Jim literally has to worry and do nothing, correct?
Well, we're gonna leave Jim on the old one, just so that he...
I'm just trying to back my phone up after fifty-eight weeks.
We're sure it's plugged in.
I do it right here, every council meeting, and you know what happens? It spins, and it spins, and it spins, and then it says, not doing it. You know?
Must be the operator.
Yeah.
He is operator.
All right. Thanks, Bill, appreciate it very much.
Everybody have a good day.
Same to you.
You too.
Have a great day.
We will, 'cause we are done. I'm fried.
Bill, really, seriously, why, when I plug it in, does it not do it?
We'll do the mayor's office tomorrow, okay?
Pardon?
We can do the mayor's office tomorrow, or just, if we have any questions, I don't think we did.
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
I'm sorry, not tomorrow.
I'll have you in there tomorrow.
Next Tuesday.
You come on your own, Jack.
If we have any questions, next Tuesday, bring them in.
Okay.
Yeah, just let them know we got about twenty pages of questions coming.
No, no, don't tell them that. All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Keith, we're done.